Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we'll start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Eric.
I have a parent's statement to read.
Would you tell me?
If anyone's done, would that be okay? Great, that'd be fine. Hello, I'm Eric Stone. I'm the chief negotiator for the South Burlington Educators Association. And the leadership of the SBEA is here this evening representing the teachers of South Burlington. We are here to urge the board to return to the table and bring this negotiating cycle to a successful end. Teachers have returned to school in good faith and are performing their duties with a level of excellence the community of South Burlington has come to expect. Their patience, however, is not endless and it is time for this board to demonstrate its respect for the teachers of South Burlington in the manner that matters most. With a fair and reasonable settlement. There is simply no reason for South Burlington, the most respected district in Chittenden County, to be the only district without a contract. We continue to face proposals from the board that jeopardize all that has been worked for and achieved over the last forty years of collective bargaining. By every measure, South Burlington represents excellence. Our teachers will not accept a mediocre settlement. It is time for the board to recognize that and meet us back at the table. Thank you for your time.
And just to clarify, the current, the current board proposal that is on the table includes over a 6% salary increase and is, is asking for an incremental 1% of healthcare contribution from the association when healthcare costs went up 10% this year. And am, am I to understand that the association is rejecting the board's current two-year proposal?
I would respectfully say that now, here, is not the venue for us to be negotiating. I think that if you want to have a productive discussion and talk about the actual items on the table and talk about how we can resolve them, that the best time and the best place for that would be at the table. I'm not here today to enter into a dialogue of the exact ins and outs of our negotiation process. Instead, we're merely here to invite the board back to the table, which the board has walked away from, and get back to the table and reach an agreement. Clearly, we have not accepted that proposal. We are interested in continuing to talk, just as the board has not accepted ours.
So, again, I understand this is not the place to negotiate, but I do want to be clear that there has been an active board proposal still on the table. And I do want to understand whether that is officially being rejected.
Ms. Fitzgerald, the last offer came from us. The board rejected it. That's your prerogative. But we still don't have a settled contract. We still need to talk. We still need to reach an agreement. So, you made an offer? Absolutely. You've made many. We made an offer. We've made many. But we, most importantly, have made the last one. The way to reach an agreement is to sit down at the table and talk.
Okay. There is an active proposal on the table, Mr. Stone.
May I ask?
Yes.
As I'm hearing what you're saying, what I would infer from that is that you're suggesting that the proposal from the board is your final proposal. Is that what you intend to say?
I'm saying the board is, was, has been looking for a specific response to the current year terms, which represent over a million dollars in incremental compensation.
I understand that you're presenting your point of view, but I think that what Eric has said is that the SBEA made the last proposal and it seems to me that you're suggesting that the board has no interest in having any further dialogue. And so, I would again ask you, are you saying to us then that that is the board's final proposal?
The board has not had that discussion. We would have to make that discussion, but the board has, it has decided or has indicated that this is still currently an active proposal and that there was insufficient movement in the counterproposal received to move forward. And I understand that, you know, this is not a negotiation, but I am looking for some clarity on the specific current two-year proposal from the board. And I know you came here imploring the board back to the table. I just want to clarify for the public that's here and, and for the, for the audience that might be at home that there is an active board proposal on the table, which is why I was asking for clarity.
And I think there is an active response to that proposal. The SBEA would maintain that there is an active response to that board proposal.
Is it?
As you say.
Absolutely.
Is it a rejection?
It is a counterproposal.
Okay. Well, in the interest, I appreciate the time and I appreciate the statement. And the board is obviously very interested in moving forward. And we'll, we'll seek clarity on the, the current board proposal at the appropriate time, but I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. We'll move on to agenda item. We do have a couple of amendments on the agenda. We're going to add a conversation about the F-35 since the report was released last week and also on school safety zones as a part, as a part of form-based codes. And where do you want to add those, David? Just?
I think if you want, you can add them right after. You can, 5A and 5B.
Okay.
You made my suggestion.
Great. All right. And with that, we'll move to agenda item five, an update on the current status of the Howard Center's permit to open the methadone clinic.
Again, it's open. We have an active appeal. We've still have in place all of our safety protocols and procedures are in effect, keeping track of all of those things. At the present time, we know that the volume is low. And again, they have communicated to us, at least in the past, that they were opening. I have received no additional communication thus far about any additional numbers of folks in need of service at this time. So, that's where we are. We're still, again, pending information on the next step legally. So, that's all I have.
Can we move to 6A and 6B so we can hear from Sabina before we get into these other things?
You're certain, that's certainly fine.
We can do that. We'll shift to agenda items.
Get the most exciting parts first.
Yeah, Sabina.
And, and ask our student representative to report out. Welcome, Sabina.
So, this week is Spirit Week, like I mentioned last week, but the ne- yeah. So, this Saturday, like I said, is the parade and we're doing tailgating from 5 to 7. So, if you guys want to buy spots, you should do that. Pretty fun.
And the weather?
It's supposed to be cloudy but not rain.
Yeah, there we go.
Hopefully, hopefully.
That's what we're hearing anyway.
And then also, as part of their float, the senior class is raising money for the Veterans Memorial. So, that's pretty cool. We're hoping, I think we're aiming for 300. So, I think we're pretty close. So, yeah, hopefully that works out. And then, there's testing and stuff coming up next week, mostly for sophomores and juniors. And then there's Career Day for the sophomores. And there's the PLAN, the PSAT, and kneecaps. So, everyone.
Sounds fun.
Yeah. Seniors.
Seems like you just started.
Yeah, well, seniors and freshmen get to come in late. So, it's pretty nice.
Sabina, when is the junior representative elected?
I'm hoping next student council meeting.
Okay.
Because we haven't.
That's a student council function.
Which is Monday, right?
Because it's the student council meeting.
Monday after that.
Oh.
Gotcha.
So soon.
Gotcha.
I think by the next meeting, he or she should be here.
Great. And you can share that responsibility.
Delegation, right?
Yeah.
Report.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Now, we will shift back to 6A and B. I'll start with the F-35.
So, as you all know, the F-35, the EIS, the new information came out, I don't know.
Response.
Response. Information came back out. And as you know, I think important to know, this board put forward some specific questions. The IES response is, is lengthy. I have not had the opportunity to go through it, but Martin, I don't know if he has had a chance or not to see if the question specific to the board has been answered. So, I would defer to Martin on that.
I had also the benefit of actually listening to VPR yesterday
and, and understood that really, and I,
I confirm this, that the bulk of the document did not change very much. There weren't new studies. It was really in the response to comments. That's, that's what changed. And, and I did look at our comment letter and, and I looked at the four responses that were provided to our comment letter. And, I mean, I'll, I'll just run through it real, real quick. Our first overall comment had to do with not, that there wasn't a sufficient consideration of the impacts to children at Chamberlain in, in two respects. One, that there was no consideration of a World Health Organization report and also that there wasn't sufficient consideration of health impacts to students who were outside during recess. There was a response to the first item as far as the world report. And it was probably, you know, it was a sufficient response. It suggested essentially that that report's not peer-reviewed, that the other reports that have been relied on were peer-reviewed. Essentially, you know, the main thing is that, in fact, the Air Force apparently did consider that report, but didn't find that it was credible and didn't put it into the study. There was no response regarding, it was silent as to whether, silent, as to whether there should be more consideration regarding impacts to children who are outdoors. There just wasn't any response. The second area that we talked about was cumulative impacts or indirect impacts. And specifically, our concern was that the Air Force has an obligation under the regulations of the National Environmental Policy Act to actually consult with other agencies. And if another agency, in conjunction with the Air Force's actions, would have cumulative effects, they're supposed to evaluate them. And we, and, and the Air Force specifically pointed out that there was an FAA program buying up homes. And we said, "Well, you, you need to look at and tell us what those impacts are and you can't use the excuse that it's not under your authority to ignore those impacts." And that's what they said in their last response to comments. And they continue to not address that issue. I mean, it's, and they continue to seem to suggest that's because it's not their program. But that's not, in fact, how the National Environmental Policy Act works, having had the benefit of litigating it for 12 years. Mitigation measures was, was the, the third main area that we talked about. And we, our main comment was that they alluded to various kinds of mitigation measures and did not really go into them. They kind of responded, they really emphasized on the mitigation measures that they're undertaking. So, you know, that was a so-so kind of response. So, that's, you know, in a nutshell, it, it was not necessarily unexpected, how they would respond. And the question is, what does one, what are the options for what we could do at this point? There really, there's not really any reason to respond or to, to write again, to point out that, hey, you did not respond to these issues that we had. I mean, you could, but I, it would be rather, rather fruitless. An other alternative, and I'm sure there are probably people out there considering it, but right away, I will say that this isn't a road that I would personally want to go down. And that is bringing a lawsuit against the Air Force because they have not done sufficient national environmental policy work. I mean, I, I just, I don't think we need to go down that road. I think we have probably a more important response should be, hopefully, the administration can start establishing contacts and working perhaps a little more closely with the Vermont National Guard to look at what other kind of mitigation measures there might be. And including figuring out if there's something that could be done as far as flights during the school day, for, for instance. I'm not sure what all could be talked about. But I think that may be more of the approach now, working with them, working with the FAA. Because part of it, we, we, I, I don't think the board wanted this information necessarily to oppose or support the F-35s. That's not what we were in this to do. But it was to get information to be able to understand the impacts and how we might be able to adjust to the F-35s coming to South Burlington. And we don't have the information still. And perhaps, I, I'm sure probably in part, is that it's difficult to get that information, that some of it might be speculative or difficult to nail down. So, I would suggest that we need to just keep tabs on this and try to establish the contacts we can work with. That's, I mean, that's where I think, that's at least where I come out right now with the F-35s.
And I don't know if you can comment on this, Martin, but I did notice, or at least it was reported, that the study referenced an area, I think it was CCV.
Yeah.
So, it referenced a school, but not Chamberlain. And, and I think that it was Winuski-based. And I may have the wrong.
Yeah, they added, they added the Community College of Vermont. That school had not been in the previous studies and they did add information.
And was there any response to the types of questions we were asking relative to that location? Even though it's?
I don't think we, or relative to Chamberlain or?
No, no, relative to CCV. And was it just added as an, in the?
It was added as an additional data point, additional place where they were showing what the impacts would be, the noise levels and such. So.
There's also Center Point really close to the airport. Was that in there?
I don't recall. May have been. I, I just looked at the schools that were South Burlington School District schools.
Mark, so how does one go about approaching this in terms of working together on mitigation efforts? So, who, who would be the contact?
I mean, I would think, I would think that David would contact the?
Magistrate and figure out who the best?
Yeah, Pu- what's his, Pueto? I'm, I'm just drawing a blank on his title.
I mean, I think it would be, yeah. I mean, we, we would work through the chain of command. I, I'm not really sure exactly where. I think General Cray would certainly be, you know, a first step. And then whom, whom best to talk to about possible, you know, you know, flight pattern, flight planning, et cetera, as Martin indicated, I thought. And, and one of those options, it seemed to make good sense. Again, I do believe there's, you know, there is, there's certain rules in play now. And to say those maybe can't be tweaked around flight departure times, takeoffs and landings. There's rules now around even the commercial traffic. So, I would think that we could certainly request and ask and, again, have the dialogue.
Well, and supposedly, my, my understanding that the jets would not arrive until 2020 is what it said on the radio. And, you know, you're doing 2020 planning and who knows what the configuration of schools will even be by then. I, it just, so.
But I think even as you said, Martin, I mean, or again, if the board directs so, you know, these options are options that are probably good now. So, if there's something we can do around noise mitigation and tweaking departure and takeoff traffic of the current F-16s, then it's likely going to maybe have a heightened awareness and a possible out, better outcome too, you know.
Don't we have noise at Chamberlain on the agenda for some point over the next three months?
We do. Yeah, it's on our, it is on there, yeah.
You know, one, one possible additional suggestion, and, you know, I am from Vermont, but sometimes from Missouri, but might be to invite a contingent to visit the school. And I think establishing that dialogue of understanding what service we deliver within that facility might just be very helpful as the basis for a conversation around mitigation.
So, make sure, in this case, the National Guard folks are aware of what it, what it, what it appears, what it's like. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
That's good.
And, and maybe if that, I mean, timing-wise, I mean, I know the, the F-35s are waves off, but maybe if that can happen before we schedule this future agenda item, then Chamberlain administration might also be able to come back with some feedback and even some representation, just to say, "This is what we saw and these are some thoughts we have."
That's good. I'm, I think if that's, again, the direction of the board is an option, it's viable to you, then I'm happy to begin that work.
Okay. Well, unless I see any objection, I think it's the consensus of the board just to reach out and establish that contact.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Martin. All right. We'll go to 6A, school safety zones as part of form-based codes.
So, this is also, as you know, is kind of some of the ongoing work that we have during interim zoning. And, and Martin has also been at the table for this and it's been a fair amount of work. I think we wanted to be able to give an update on kind of where we currently are and where that's going. So, there's been a pretty significant amount of time currently spent. So, I would respectfully turn it over to you, Martin, just give an update.
I guess I, I have a question. I mean, well, first of all, just to back up real quick. We, we had a discussion with Sean Tuohy. He is modifying somewhat the language that was presented. He is eliminating, we, we decided in the course of this discussion to eliminate hospital and social services from, from the list for various reasons. And then we started talking about putting together a cover memo, memo essentially, to go with any language we propose being sent to the city. And we want to make clear what our rationale is for both, whatever the zones that are set up, and that's something Dave and administrators are going to work on first, actually defining the, the physical proximity of the zones around the schools. But then also rationales for why we think certain uses should, should be prohibited. And I had David or Delina sent out today my first crack at putting the rationales down in writing. And we could either, I suppose, go through these now or you folks can all cogitate about them and send the comments to Delina or, or David for incorporation. The next step is, you know, I, David's looked at this as well because I think the board needs to express its concerns. Administration needs to express its concerns and then Sean can kind of take a look at it to, to wrap it up. And timing-wise, I mean, I'm hoping that we can have this memo and, and the actual language together by the next board meeting. I think we, we suggested that to Sean as well so that we can agree that this is good to go. What I, Dave and I have talked about is, as a next step, after everybody's on board with the material and where we are here, that we would try to set up a meeting with Paul Connor and perhaps the, the city manager. I don't know if there'd be, be a permanent city manager by that point.
I think it will be named by then.
Yeah. To, to sit down and, and talk about the process over the city of how to move this along. So. Now, what's the pleasure as far as looking?
I'd like some time to ruminate over it if you don't mind.
Yeah, I think that, that makes, that may, I mean, this took a lot of ruminating. I mean, it seems obvious that adult bookstores should not be by schools, but to articulate that rationale.
Yeah, but I think some of, some of these are a little less obvious, like service station.
Some of them are less, yes.
I mean, there is, you know.
Is there?
And, and some of these can go. If we, I mean, this, part of this exercise is to make sure that we do have, in fact, have a rationale.
Is it a specific, I had a couple of questions and I agree with Julie that we should probably have some time to think about this and give the feedback to you or through Delina. Do you have to specify the use or can you say something like that you have, on adult use, you have the definition? But if, for instance, you just said any, you know, any exposure to obscene materials, so it's, it's not necessarily specific. And there's several areas that talk about hazardous chemicals. Can, can they be lumped by the, what the concern is versus what the use is?
Yeah, I, I would think so. And my understanding from Sean is that he, he drafted this with the, the current regulations in mind. So, each of these definitions are coming from the current land use regulations. So, that's, but that does not mean that we can't take a different tact. And we're trying to say the language that the folks who are dealing with this already know. It's kind of part of it. But again, that may be changing with the form-based codes. So, we could take a different tact.
Okay. And then?
If you all think, after thinking about it, that that's the right way to go, that we're concerned about potential property damage and therefore, there shouldn't be petroleum storage. There shouldn't be nightclubs or junkyard, whatever.
My, my thing from you, were you thinking more like in bulk storage to be more explicit about protecting students from, you know, large amounts of bulk, you know, petroleum in, in the event that explosion, you know, could, could jeopardize their safety?
Yeah, I mean, I, like, a, a good example is we see hazardous substances here quite often. So, I, I wonder if an approach to this might be, you know, any uses with, you know, exposure to hazardous chemicals or petroleum projects for, products, for example. And then list examples versus lock into the application with the justification beside it, where it's fairly similar on some.
It does lead the, then reader to, to more explicit specifics on?
Rational, reason.
On the rationale, yeah. It's like start with the rationale. Yeah.
So, I'm wondering, would all, if, if any of these places exist now, they'd be grandfathered in? Because I, you know, I think about the, the medical piece and I think, you know, if there are doctors' offices that are doing minor surgical procedures and they might be using certain medications and they would be able to, it's not like people are going to be, have to move.
Correct. Okay.
And I think this is, again, the idea, and, you know, I commend Martin for his time in this, through this lens. It's really about looking at, as we continue to move forward as a city, particularly city center, happens to be form-based code, but I think anything in our city that still has a fair amount of undeveloped land, you know, what are the, you know, kind of guiding, guideposts that are going to help regulate, you know, what's appropriate and reasonable? So, again, I think this is a great, you know, a great document that I think hopefully will be part of the land development regulations.
And two other quick questions. I'm assuming that Sean has done this, but the, these are definitions that are in the existing charter, but, or regulations. Has he benchmarked kind of other cities and towns for comparable language?
As far as for prohibited uses, my understanding is that he has looked and not found really much out there.
Okay.
I mean, this, I can't imagine that this is unique, but it hasn't, it hasn't jumped out. I mean, there, there are sample, examples where specific uses are prohibited and some that have been struck down, like methadone clinics being prohibited. But only because it was just the methadone clinic.
Yeah. And, and I know I've seen some others when we were doing some benchmarking work, like pain management clinics. There's often a, a thousand-foot zone from schools. But that was a question. And then the other, the last one was, were we able to track down any history on why the language disappeared out of the regulations in the past?
Uh, no. And, and to be honest, I completely forgot to raise that. I was, I, I had that as, as an issue that I thought about as well and then just haven't mentioned. We should probably do that, if you could.
Yeah. We, it is, it is in front of them. They, they know about it.
Yeah.
We wanted to research it. And again, it was a Paul Connor question, but I, I wasn't there with that last one and kind of why it got dropped off the, kind of the language. What was our obligation or not, you know? So, again, I think the other part on the thousand-foot piece, I think that, you know, that's a fairly common sense application, although as Martin and I spent a little bit of time looking at kind of our current school existing maps. There, you know, in some ways, the thousand feet doesn't necessarily make great sense based on border property.
It's pretty arbitrary based on the concerns of traffic patterns.
Right. And in some cases, you don't want the thousand-foot piece to be, you know, 1,002, which then, you know, doesn't, it doesn't have merit. So, it's really being more mindful of the? mindful of the, what's currently located and what could possibly be located in and around current school settings, so we're gonna, I'm gonna work on trying to come up with that.
So if it's the board's consensus, we'll look at this and provide feedback through Delina, do you want to give us a date, because I know this, we're proposing this beyond the steering committee, so.
Yeah, I don't know if this, if we want to go to the steering committee with this, is that what?
It'll be, it'll be, well, it's, it'll come up in the, in the agenda that the meeting that David and I had.
It will come, and we're gonna, we'll get to this, under just kind of overview of interim zoning and brief committee reports.
Right.
As far as detail, it will be back on our, our October 16th meeting, school board meeting, and that's, your, your desire is that we have feedback then from board, from administration, so we can further tweak this, and readying it for then a meeting with Paul Connor.
Yeah, I think that, that, that's right, and as far as, I'm, I'm hoping that you can task somebody, because I'm gone for the next 11 days or something, so, because I think we need to incorporate whatever the rest of the board wants to have in this, and then pass this on for Sean, to Sean for polishing, and give him a little time to, to do that.
Yeah. So let's maybe target the feedback by next Monday, then through Delina?
Anytime, I'll be at the duck blind, so I won't be available, but.
I'm sure you'll provide your feedback. And, and our goal is-
This is my feedback.
Not to have a final document for the steering committee.
Yeah, that's right.
Great. Uh, do we have a date for Monday?
I just have to do a little math here.
Seventh, all right. Great, I'll put that on my to-do list. Great, thank you, Martin, thanks, David. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, superintendent's report on Vermont Project Search.
So, again, I, I, this is my one sole item that's in my report for you tonight, and I've asked Joanne Godak to be here, since she's with us tonight as well, and I'm going to let her really, you know, talk a little bit and then answer some questions for you folks, but, you know, I just want to say, I mean, a lot of the things we're trying to do around engaging students, all students, the bridging program has been a very successful program, that it has begun, well, I would say, a very positive movement towards engaging kids, our students out into the public for meaningful and purposeful work. What we know is that, you know, that, that work that has happened has informed kind of the next step, and a lot of people have been looking and watching and learning and saying, where do we go from here? And so Vermont Project Search actually is the next step from the bridging program. I think that you're going to have, you know, questions around cost to the district and, and things of that nature, as you know, there's eligibility requirements and costs that does come back to the districts through special education, and so we currently have a cost that we're running under our current bridging program. So, again, I think that this is a natural, from my perspective, proud evolution into the next step around helping kids to be, not just our students, but also other students within the county. So, without further ado, I don't know, Joanne, you can give some additional, leave some time for questions.
The question you have, I actually came from a task force meeting today in Montpelier, because the, the agency of education really was, was putting this out and supporting it through, according to their personnel development grants, so they have a facilitator and they were, have been planning this since last year, and then put out a proposal for which Chittenden County went for with me as a special ed director, who's been sort of organizing the bridging. So it's not only, I think Elizabeth or someone had questions about, you know, who will this support, it's not only for South Burlington students, but for other students in Chittenden County who would tuition to this project search, which would be administered by myself and the, the adult service agency as they, as the kids graduate and go onto adult services. It's a national program, I put the links in the handout that I sent you guys, and it's really, has really great outcomes, it's almost 100% placement. As we, we're looking to try and get involved as a Chittenden, as a Chittenden County group of special ed administrators, I actually put a survey out to my colleagues to look at the placement we have for our kids with developmental disabilities, and it's not very good, their job placement when they graduate. It's probably between 10 and 60% kids get jobs, and this project search is close to 100% placement. So we're at the very baby steps of this, we haven't even really approached and identified a business to work with, although I think we all know the business that we're trying to work with, but we have, we're going about it slowly, it has to be a large business, there's one very large business here in, in Chittenden County that we're hoping to work with, but we haven't identified that business yet. It's very exciting for me, because I really see with our ends and college and career ready for all of our kids, this is an additional opportunity for our kids with developmental disabilities, where they can be potentially employed in a rigorous job, not just a mundane job, they're put into internships, they go through three different internships, and they learn really high-level jobs, and by immersing, immersing them into a work environment with their classroom and with these internships, what Project Search has found is that these kids, they, their level of engagement and their abilities rise up with the people around them. So it's very exciting, in our meeting today, we were really talking about planning the budget, I met with Liz Barker, who is the director from Hartford, who runs the program, the, it's called River Valley Project Search, because it's also, it's New Hampshire and Vermont, and they work with Dartmouth Hitchcock, they've been very successful. It's very similar to the program I've been running with bridging, so it's not different than how we've been running that program, but it's a little bit larger, and a little bit, I would say larger, a little bit more focused. And Project Search itself provides a lot of consultation, they will be coming here from, I think they come from Cincinnati, and helping to guide the work over the next, over this year, with a hopeful start in the fall, with our interns starting in the fall. So I don't know what other questions you might have for me.
I mean, I think it's important to know, you know, how it's in front of the board, I mean, this obviously, I mean, I have a desire to keep you informed, I don't want to be doing things that are, you know, reactionary, and again, Joanne, this is an opportunity that became available to us, kind of through, you know, fairly quick, you know, recent process, and again, there is some pretty significant decisions in moving forward, and so, again, that's why it's in front of you, you know, this evening in, in this, in this manner.
Can I ask you a capacity question? So you've answered one question about how many SB students would be, up to eight, it said, but then you just talked about tuitioning kids in, so.
We're, we're hoping to have eight to 12 interns start.
Okay.
The issue is that no one school district typically has eight to 12 seniors with developmental disabilities, so that's why we pool among the districts to try and get that whole cohort in, and that's what we've done with bridging, is we don't have enough students with developmental disabilities in South Burlington to really have a cohort to go out to UVM and St. Mike's and do the adult work, so we work together with other districts. So it depends on who we have that's identified, you know, with intellectual challenges and can meet the application process, it'll be an application process, kids have to want to do it, parents have to really be engaged, kids have to be engaged in order to really be a part of the program.
I think, again, a big focus of the bridging program was exactly what you said, I mean, we didn't, we, we didn't have enough, and in order to be more efficient and cost-effective, it was beneficial to pool resources that, you know, from, from a area that could help support, you know, similar kind of opportunities for kids, and so as a result, a good, a good positive movement, but obviously, you know, this is, again, I think, a logical next step, particularly around business connections and employment for kids.
So what happened, Joanne, to the bridging program?
Bridging program will probably still go on, because it serves a larger variety of kids, there are kids with significant challenges that probably won't be able to participate in Project Search, my desire is to have that taken over by another school district, and I'll work with the collaborative to find out, so that, so that South Burlington can really take the, the lead on Project Search.
But that, that resource hasn't been identified yet?
The what?
The resource to take over the bridging program?
We haven't, I haven't had that discussion with the collaboration, but they've all been part of this decision about doing Project Search too, so my, my hope and desire is that bridging will continue. It hasn't really met the needs of all kids, especially in the employment area, so this is something that's really going to help with that.
And, I mean, I'm looking at the response, that South Burlington would begin Project Search and no longer run, but it would run up to the point that somebody from the collaborative takes it over.
Right, for next school year, new year.
We, we don't want to be dumped with.
I don't want to have to run both of them, I don't think I have the capacity to do that.
Well, and, and my fundamental questions with anything like this are really, you know, incremental costs, does it dilute our, our resources in terms of staffing such that it might make individuals like yourself less effective because you're spread so thin, and then how does it serve our student population better?
Yeah, I don't, you know, from the, the meeting that we had today, looking at my, my, I think the startup year, this planning year is probably going to be the most challenging year of getting everything going, and then we're going to be responsible for hiring the special educator that runs the classroom, they also talked about us hiring the job coach, but I would rather contract with the adult service agency, because there has to be two job coaches, and we talked about that today, so that we can have some consistency. And, again, I would be responsible for, for supervising that special education position, I am responsible right now for supervising the bridging person, so that would be a big change. So I, in, in a little bit, the little difference of, of work would probably be recruiting students, we haven't really had to do a lot of recruiting of students, although I don't think, from my view, they have had more challenges down in Hartford in that area, I don't think we're going to have a big challenge with that, because our regional coordinators group is very connected, and we know each other, we meet regularly, and so we know who these students are, much like we ran bridging, we kind of knew who the students were, and we didn't have any trouble with that, but a big part of what they do is recruiting, advertising and recruiting students for, as interns down there, so that would, those would be two, two of the jobs that I would have to do, but it's not unlike work that I already do, so I don't see it in, as diluting, I see it as adding to the work that I do to, so we have more opportunities for the kids that I serve.
And I appreciated the link to the site too, because I did go on it, and of course, a little knowledge is dangerous, but I understand your comments, my understanding was, a business liaison was a requirement of this program.
Yes.
So it sounds like you have some aspirations of who you want to partner with, and good luck with that.
And we're told to be mum about that.
Right.
There's a process we go through. There was also a big spot on CAX in December last year, and they sent me the link today for that, I don't know if you guys caught that, but there was a whole spot where they showed the kids in the setting down in Dartmouth, and it's pretty powerful stuff, we're probably going to bring some of those graduates up here to help to talk to the families up here, and they're excited about coming up here, they're all, they're, all of them have gotten positions, so.
Great. Any other questions? And this isn't an item that needs action, is it?
Well, I, I don't, I don't see it, I think it's an, and it's an action item for me, just to inform you, I mean, we're, we're in the process of moving forward, I think it's a natural evolution, obviously, we have some things along the way around, as Joanne indicated, around position and around the bridging program, and a lot of it's with her collective colleagues around how this is going to go. I mean, if, if we get a lot of pushback for some reason, that, you know, we're going to have to run it all, then we're going to have to obviously reexamine our, our commitment, but I don't, at this point, there's an awful lot of excitement for all the right reasons for our kids, and in many ways, sometimes, regular education, it follows along with what we would say happens in, in, in the area of special education, differentiation and instruction, I mean, we, you know, that was long ago, and now in regular ed classes, you know, that's, as you know, much more known, business partnerships, as you've heard me already talk about, there's our commitment to, to doing more of that, and again, this is in part connected very much to that, so, anyway. The action really is to inform you, and, and let you know, and answer any questions that you might have about this.
Good, we'll consider our self-informed.
Yeah, thank you, Joanne.
Great. Thank you. Good, we'll move on to agenda night, item eight, steering committee agenda.
So at your place, you do have, and thanks to Delina for getting that ready, we have a steering committee agenda, draft agenda, ready, and just to be clear, Elizabeth and I have met with both Kevin Dorn, the interim city manager, and Pam McKenzie, the chair of the council, on now two occasions, we had one this, yesterday, and this is work that both board, you folks have had in, and, and discussions that we've had with them, so this is kind of now reordered, again, it's still a draft and open for conversation, and I don't know necessarily that we can get to all of these, we, we may need to be a little bit more diligent about how we're going to do this work, but with that said, I'm, that's where I'm at, anyway.
And did this get in front of the council as well?
It will go to Kevin, they have not yet met, they don't meet till next week.
Okay.
So Kevin, I will get it to Kevin and have a conversation, and, so that's, again, why it's draft.
And the intent of the pre-planning meeting is that the council will have seen this as well, I suspect we may only get through agenda item five based on what we had talked about yesterday, but these items were some of the items that kind of came out of the master list that the school board has had a chance to look at once. We did prioritize in our meeting kind of what we thought was more near-term, which would be the audit and inventory, I, uh, agenda item number two, and then kind of went through the fact that that audit and inventory, as well as a facility master plan, would inform agenda item four, which is budgeting process, because our hope is that we'd actually have some progress on those two areas before we both get into our budgeting cycles.
I think that we, again, I'm happy to, you know, we could add future agenda items, or, or again, we can run the meeting as such that park those as we move through it, but.
And the other thing that will be discussed at this meeting, and you might want to add this as an agenda item, we'd be meeting logistics, because there is an intent and an interest to separate this from the front end of either a council or a school board meeting, and to make it a little bit longer, so that as work gets done, subcommittees or working groups could actually report out on progress.
So we can add that, actually, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I'd, I'd go ahead and put it in, because it will take a, a minute.
Yep, that's good.
Good, are any, any comments, additions, or reprioritization?
So we don't actually have, we aren't actually going to have an inventory for this meeting, are we?
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna at least begin, at least try to give you some things that we think might be opportunities, you know, we, we've already had some discussions prior to this even, but I, I think the idea is to create also some rationale reasons and, and some evidence of, of what we think we could be doing, you know, more collaboratively, you know, now, I'm at, cost sharing, you know, as you know, we went through that, there's some of those pieces which were efficiencies, and so we've, that's where that dialogue has really happened.
Okay.
All right, unless I hear any other questions, we'll move on, thanks, David.
Yeah, thank you.
Good, we'll move on to agenda item nine, amendment to the non-union support staff retirement pension. Do we have something on this?
Yeah, it should, I don't know. This is, so if I, this, the changes in that were specific to the, to the retirement fund, so you, you discussed it, it's going to be hard probably for, I'd like action to be taken on this tonight.
Do you have a copy of it here, or?
Yeah, let me just see if I have that.
The, the gist of this, as I recall, would be that new employees would go into a defined contribution plan?
Mm-hmm, if I don't have it, perhaps a, you know, it could be directed to the clerk to review and to sign, as long as the intent of the letter is specific to the content, I don't, I don't have it. Oh, you're not here.
Before 6:00 AM, Laurel Morgan, you'll have to wait eleven, eleven minutes.
We can stay late for the timekeeper next.
Yeah.
I don't have it on me, and I apologize for that.
I'd love to be put in your place.
Yeah, I just, I, I may have it, I can look as we go through the rest of the.
So it sounds like you've got some time constraints, that you need action.
Well, I think it's important, it is important, because, you know, we have potential new hires that can come at any time, and it's important with our current employee base to have this in effect and get it communicated out, so.
Can we do it electronically?
We could, and then, you know, I, I would need it signed eventually, but it would be fine, so long as it doesn't change. It's the same document you saw last time, we introduced it to you, I didn't have it on. to you. I didn't have it on as action item. We reviewed it, understood it, and the idea was to bring it back, and I didn't unfortunately bring it.
Do we have to warrant it?
Um, I think as long as you, you take action on it, so that it, you know, I would say that you would approve the current change to the pension as provided at the previous meeting, and approve it that way.
And that will meet the timeframe here?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll, you'll send that out electronically? We'll have an opportunity to review it?
Yep.
And will we take action at the next meeting, or do you need?
I don't think you need to. I think if you do it here, if you do it that way, take action, as long as, you know, there's no changes to the document, you accept the document for the so-noted pension change, then we'll just, you'll, you'll see it electronically and, and move it that way. Someone can sign it.
So is the, is the board comfortable if, if I take the role with feedback that is supportive of that change, that I would take the role to sign off on that on behalf of the board?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the way we'll handle that, David? Great. All right. We'll shift on to Agenda Item Ten, Executive Limitations Policy Monitoring on 2.2 Treatment of Staff. I think, Martin, this is the LaLonde Show tonight.
So you have the changes, again, Martin and I did meet, and the changes from the previous, one really are reflected on two of five, on the unlawful discrimination of protected classes. The removal is obviously the, the out, and then we added back in, again, in conversation with Martin, is that, and I think it makes sense, is let's not take out something that we're currently doing. And again, it seemed to have merit to us to keep that included. I don't know, Martin, if that's anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think that that's right, and I think that it was fine. The one question, I, I did have one que, a further question on it, on, on detailed policy number three in the evidence. At one, I think at one point in the third paragraph there, you would have that policies are provided in writing or orally to all new employees. I, I thought that was my understanding at one point, that, for instance, I'm speaking specifically on unlawful discrimination of protected classes, that there aren't physical materials provided to teachers, but as part of the orientation and training that is addressed. Is that right?
It is. I think I, I took the more conservative approach and said that we provide things in writing even to those that are, are hired after our orientations. And so for the most part, and again, we're making some changes on our hiring protocol, where, where everyone's going to be provided a much more succinct process, regardless of when they're hired. So the reason, I mean, again, I think, I'm happy to do that. I think we do a, still a good job. I can honestly say, I think we can all say that we do it orally as well. I just took it out because I didn't think it, you know, I didn't include it, I should say, because.
Well, you could, you could say it in, in where you have the list under policy one. It's just I, what, the confusion that I wish.
It contradicts.
Boy, well, no, it's just that I, you're saying this information is provided to all new employees at new staff orientation. But I, I think immediately, well, where is that information? I want to see it in writing. But if, if this information is provided orally or there, you know, I think it should say one of the two places. I don't really.
It's fine. I, I have no problem with it.
Just to avoid the confusion that there isn't a written policy. Now, there's lots of written laws on it, but it's not a policy.
So we're still, where are you proposing making a change, then?
I would say either it could be at page two of five, where it's, has a highlighted, this information is provided to all new employees orally at new staff orientation.
Or at the bottom of three.
Or at the bottom of three, or both. Policies are provided in writing or orally to all new employees at.
So in writing or orally?
Yeah. I think, I think at both, at both places. I think that, that.
Do we, in the written documents, do we provide translation?
We do, I mean, a lot, to the best of our ability. Our, our website does have a translation feature, but the dialects sometimes don't always match up. So we do bring in interpreters, and we actually go through all of the, the, you know, our, our written material with them. And so, and that's been a practice now for the last couple of years.
Do we need to spell that out, that accommodations are made, or is that covered elsewhere?
I think, I think it's okay. I'm, I'm happy to do whatever. I think it's okay because we're essentially saying, you know, in writing or in oral. That's right.
Whether, whatever it takes. Okay.
Is it really not reasonable to provide it in writing where somebody couldn't understand?
And that's really why we've done, and that's, I think, merit maybe back to your orally, because it is then, in fact, read to them and had it through a conversation.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Right. So that does provide merit to that.
Then I'll take otherwise, it was fine. I think it was all in compliance.
Can we take action on that?
So as we look at this, let's go through the, just for consistency's sake, we'll go through the detailed policies. Number one, reasonable interpretation. Adequate data and in compliance. And, and we'll note with that change on page two. Detail policy two.
Yes, yes, and yes.
Thank you. Detail policy three.
Also yes, yes, and yes with that noted change.
Detail four.
Also yes, yes, and yes.
And detail five.
And also yes, yes, and yes.
And the overall policy of with respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions that are untimely, unfair, undignified, disorganized, or vague. Yes across the board?
Yep. Yes, yes, and yes.
So this is reasonably interpreted with adequate data, and we are in compliance. All right. And we're signed off.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you again, Martin. Thanks, David. And Delina?
Yes.
And we have the memo from John Stewart. I forward it to your emails.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to Agenda, Item Eleven, to set the agenda for the October sixteenth meeting. And is that the steering committee?
Yes. So we're going to be juggling, and that's an hour only, and then we're, so it's going to be in our space.
So was this the one where we were going to start at five with the steering committee and then move our executive session to after the meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Did your steering committee only announce?
Yes, it is only.
For, for this next one, yeah.
Then we're going to talk about logistics and change of meeting times.
Oh, so six o'clock is the steering committee, then?
Right, right.
Oh, it is six or five?
Six, six to seven with our, with our executive session being at the end.
Yeah.
Unless you wanted to, you know, try to go earlier, but that's not.
So steering committee's at six, and we'll shift the executive session to the end.
Yep.
And there were some items that we weren't able to cover because of John's absence. Are we putting them on this agenda?
Yeah. So they're, they're, they're back on there. We have to add, let's see, I think we added those back in.
Yeah, they're on.
On there. So I do want, I have a couple of things of clarification, and that is under ends policy monitoring. What I would like to do, and I'm, I can add this, but I just want to just update you on this. I, I'd like to bring, bring back a revised ends proposal, which brings in the, the SB five and six that you saw quite a bit ago, but Stewart and I have done some work on that, and the administrators have, as you so directed. And I'd like to bring that back for, again, a discussion and an update. So it doesn't just read ends monitoring. It will read revised ends proposal and update on ends monitoring dashboard.
What number? I'm sorry.
It's, it's actually under eight, under the last bullet.
Okay.
You know, my first reaction to the administrative reports are these are all pretty meaty.
Yep.
As well as we have two, oh, well, we could take treatment of staff off, but we've got 2.8, and we've got a policy on prevention of bullying of students.
Because John, John has to be done with 2.8 in time for us to review it for this meeting, and he, I mean, he may not be all right.
I think, I think we'll be.
It's not very complicated.
No.
Yeah, that's.
Policy.
Now, number eleven, I don't think that's an action item. Didn't we talk about that last week, that?
You don't need it. You, you've talked about it. I just didn't know if you want to see the final version of it. You didn't direct me to do that. You kind of said just go ahead and get it done with those noted changes or recommendations. But I want to kind of make sure you're, I'm clear about that.
What's the interest of the board on that? We, we had not requested that come back to us before it goes out. Couple options. We could send it out just to look at it ahead of time, or we could delegate it to the committee that worked on it. What's the board's preference?
I like delegating when it worked on.
I'm sorry I offered that option.
Well, I, we can just send it back out to, to the two of you to just make sure it catches.
So we'll, we'll just take a look, and we could take it off this agenda then?
Yep, that's perfect.
So I guess, David, Agenda Items Eight, Nine, and Ten, it sounds like Ten could be fairly strict, quick. But Eight and Nine are pretty robust.
Especially if we're going to be meeting afterwards, executive session.
Could we have our executive session at five? That's a good idea.
Okay.
I mean, with that. Because then we.
We could do that.
That'd be fine.
Okay. So we'll shift executive session up to five.
Maybe we're just trying to be sensitive.
Yeah. It's where, where it makes it long. Is there anything on this that you feel could shift? Because I do think this is pretty.
I mean, I support pay structures, you know, I, I feel like, you know, the one-to-one is an important component, and I'd like to, you know, get back to you on that. I think fundraising, you've been waiting for some update and some feedback. I think I need to keep that. Some of this I can do through, through, we can do through written information. Pay structures, I think we could, we could just move that.
Shift that one.
Yeah. Nutritional services, again, I'd like to keep that, just because that's a directed.
And that's one we've asked for.
That's right.
Routine updates.
Yep.
That could be just what you send, and.
Correct.
Yep.
And any quick, any questions that you might have regarding that? The long-term financial stewardship plan is not certainly in its final state. It's just in, I'm giving you, I want to give some progression and thinking on this, and where, or where we are. And then the ends monitoring really, or the revised ends proposal, I think, before we go and monitor, again, with, with communications that we've had before around the desire to pull in SB five and six, the document you had, actually, that Stewart was not at the meeting with us, we've done some work as a result, and I'd like to bring that back before then we go and monitor ends. But that said, I do want to give you kind of an update on where we are and how we're progressing with ends monitoring, and so we'll be prepared to do that. So that said.
Well, it sounds like the only one with some flexibility is the long-term financial stewardship plan. Do you think we'll be in a position to have a dialogue by then, or and or is it something that could wait?
As you all know, John, obviously, has been out of the, the network. So let me see how he's progressing. If we don't feel we can, that certainly would be the next one to take off. So pay structures, long-term financial stewardship plan may come off. Definitely pay structures. And then as much as we can do in the written format, at least on nutrition services, fundraising update, to prepare you to just be able to answer quest, you know, ask questions. So, yep.
And then Agenda Item Nine, this is a required policy. And is this a revision? We have a policy right now, right?
We, we do. But again, it's, it would be, it is the first reading, so.
It was, is there anything mandated relative to changing the current policy, or are we just reviewing? This is a scheduled review.
Scheduled review.
Okay. So this also could be fairly quick if there's no mandate to change it.
Say quick.
Yeah.
It's actually the state revised the law on bullying over the last legislative session.
How much change, though, Stuart?
It's not a real lot, but it puts bullying the way harassment was. In other words, there were steps you had to do in harassment that you didn't have to do in bullying. Now you have to do those steps with bullying as well.
So this is the first of eleven readings, then?
No, 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 no. No. That was harassment of employees. You didn't really have to do that with harassment of students. It's pretty straightforward, but there are, you know, small changes that they made as they upgraded, in a sense, bullying.
Okay. So this is, this is a result, or this review is a result of legislative changes, then? Okay. So if I could make a suggestion, I think this has worked well, is if we can highlight, if it's possible, just what the old policy was and where it's changing as a result of the new legislation, that might make the review really a little easier.
Yep.
Okay. Great. All right. And we'll change the October sixteenth on.
Yep. And the protection of teachers will also, again, this is part of the current contractual.
So you want to put that as the, we'll put it in space eleven, maybe?
Yep.
What is that?
Part of the contract is there's an opportunity to protect teachers.
Oh, 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 I know what you're saying. Okay.
Again, I work with the administrators on that, on whom they want to consider.
Okay. And anything to be added or deleted from, it sounds like we could take fundraising off future agendas.
Does it make sense where the education quality standards, common language, can that be fit into the SB five?
Not really. Again, those of you who know, I mean, Patrick provided you a, a brief overview of, of the EQS. We have a lot more to do. I think it should, I think it should remain there.
Well, also because it's a hearing section right now.
Yeah, and feedback process.
It's March, you know, when they'll actually be passed. This is a time to relook.
I think we should keep it on there. It's likely we can, we'll meld it in with some other things that are going on for you, but.
And I'm wondering, all or some of the calendar 2.0 meetings in the community will have been held by the sixteenth, or is that true or not?
I think that is true. I think they will be all done by the sixteenth.
I'm wondering if not at this meeting, or maybe the next one, we should get an update on the, on the community feedback. Would it be premature to put it on this one? I can't remember the last public meeting.
I think, I think I could work on it, and it's a.
That's a big ticket.
It's a big ti, yeah, it's a little bit more convers, I think we should reserve it for the following one. And just, this is a perfect, I'll just tell you, since it's up. Tomorrow night, I'll be at BFA, just participating with other superintendents around the discussion and collection of information. And then Burlington, and I forget when Burlington is, it's next week. And so I'll be part of that, and so I will be able to report out on kind of where we are and what we've learned or listened to.
Okay. So for the reprieve we got tonight.
Yeah.
All right. And we'll move on to Agenda Thirteen, considering the minutes of the September twenty-fifth meeting.
I had one thing, the harassment of employees, page three. I think we actually took a vote on that as opposed to announcing consensus. Is that, am I remembering that right? I remember that I moved to adopt the policy.
And typically, those are listed as action, so yes, that should, we can modify that. Do we remember who seconded that?
I don't remember who seconded that.
Do you have that, Delina?
I might have it here. She was not.
I can see who seconded it.
You think it was me. She thinks it was me. Okay, Julie.
Thank you, Sabina.
She heard the ever second, so I say Sabina, so that.
With that modification, by consensus of the minutes approved? All right. We'll make that one modification. And we have a new hire on the consent agenda for number fourteen. Want to share that?
Actually, this is in part connected to our ELL population, so this is responding to a need that has had a pretty significant uptick in our population of students. And so this is a current employee, but adding some additional time currently to this employee. So she's currently an employee and does work out of FHTMS in a point-two capacity right now. And so this would be adding a point-five. and so this would be adding a .5, again, based on the pretty significant additional needs that have come into the district.
And by consensus, we will approve this recommended position from the administration? That's approved, David? All right, any announcement, or actually, we've got any questions that were not answered on AP orders, Agenda Item 15? I think we have those covered. Announcements?
So announcements, we, Sabina already highlighted some of the activity going on at the high school. What I'm highlighting here is, again, just the variety of testing that's happening, assessments that are happening at the high school, and the dates. Pretty significant, so the students that are affected, it's pretty significant, you know, for the high school to work around the schedule to get it done. Also, at Chamberlain, you see in October, again, the kneecap testing window is, is in play for elementary schools as well. I've added just some things on here, if you're interested in participating, or you see some activity, Safe Routes to Schools, again, this is an initiative to really encourage, you know, our children to be walking to and from, and staying healthy in a safe and environment and way. So International Walk to School Day will happen on Wednesday, and Chamberlain will be doing that. We have, again, our Wellness and Resilience, again, this is a day retreat that is happening. We also have some topics that are of interest, and we encourage people to participate in those, and we're posting those available so that people, you know, can come. And again, we've had really positive response to that. I want to recognize that John Stewart, our business manager, you know, lost his brother. We're saddened by that, obviously, and show our support for him, and we'll welcome him back when he gets here. Other than that, the calendar piece I already covered, and that those are upcoming meetings, and again, I'll keep people posted. I think important to note around the calendar, this is very much of an important listening session for superintendents. There's an awful lot of anxiety around possible movement. Again, I, we're all committed to making sure that we're listening and responding. We have an awful lot of unanswered questions, and again, I see our, our work is pretty significant ahead. I do not see a major change in the upcoming year. That said, it's end of announcements.
Any other announcements?
David, just wanted to notify you, you probably saw by your table the science kneecap results. We'll be giving you further details, but while you could see that there was a significant decrease in the elementary school scores, which were statewide as well, so that actually Chamberlain got kudos in the newspaper, even though they lost, you know, points, as you can see, but we'll talk more about that in the future, but we'll all have Chittany County comparisons like you like to see, and things like that as well, if you have any particular questions at this moment, but I'm sure you all plenty.
Yeah, just trying to not, can you be surprised when somebody asks you a question? I see that. Again, you know, part of our work is to evaluate and look at, you know, how our curriculum's working, how instruction, how profession development is connected to then student outcomes.
It's really after three years of great growth in inquiry, you know, and there's a different experiment in the fourth grade every year, and this was bees and pollen, and I guess they didn't like it as much as magnetos and magnets, and it may not fit actually as much what we do in the fourth grade. I mean, we don't choose those, those experiments, and so I think... This state, well, the state doesn't, I mean, they hire a testing company, measure progress, and every year it's a different experiment. Fourth grade gets an experiment every year, which is their inquiry task, middle school like every other year, and the 11th grade inquiry task is actually just getting the data as if somebody else did the experiment. So it's a very kind of different. I do want to note that the increase in the high school, while not significant from 50 to 54%, was mostly in earth science, which is where this is the first ninth grade group, the last year's 11th grader who went through our new earth science program. So that is, you know, one of those times when you say, oh, well, that's good, you know, the first cohort that went through that did improve their score in that category, so we feel good about that.
So thank you, Stewart. Again, again, just to give you just a little bit of information, you know, some information in the event that you do get some questions, again, our work is to get you more informed and updated around assessment data, so.
Just wanted to note that some students and staff from Big Picture were in Maupelier last week and testified about mental health services for children in front of the Mental Health Oversight Committee, which is pretty exciting.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn? All in favor? We are adjourned.